We're gonna start right in with the Grand Avenue Bridge over the Des Moines River Design Project, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jeb to talk about the process.
Morning Mayor, members of council. Jeb Brewer, City Engineer. This morning, I just wanted to take some time to present to council some design options for the Grand Avenue Bridge over Des Moines River. Today's the presentation, the bulk of it will be presented by Tim Monson, our consultant which has been retained from Chuck Britson. But before he starts, I just wanted to give a little bit of background on where we are in the process. Last year, we started looking at the Grand Avenue Bridge over Des Moines as a rehabilitation project. As you're familiar with, we do federally approved inspections of all of our bridges. As part of the inspections, we develop plans for rehabilitations of various bridges around the city. At that time, it was thought that a rehabilitation of the bridge would be the most cost-effective. We started on that process, and Tim will give some more details about that, but it ended up that the bridge was in such a condition that replacement was the better option. Earlier this year, we started to do the design work for replacement, and today, at this workshop, we'd like to present some options on what that replacement bridge would look like. We do have planned a public involvement process. A week from tonight would be a public information meeting. We're also, in addition to that, we're going to have an electronic survey which will be posted on our website after today's presentation so that citizens can give their input on the options. And then we would like to bring that back to council on the 21st for council to take action. So today, there's no action being requested from council. It's purely informational, but we wanted to lay it out before we start the public information process. You also notice that, right now, we're looking at the actual bridge construction to be in 2016 with utility work in '15. There's extensive amount of utilities in this bridge, and we want to make sure that those are taken care of without extending the closure time on the bridge because that traffic impacts are significant. We want to try to minimize those. With that, I'll turn that over to Tim.
Thank you. Good morning. Want to briefly walk you through the evaluation process that took place last year, the structural evaluation. Like Jeb said, this started off as a rehabilitation project. That was the intent going in. What we ended up doing, we spent both June and July last year inspecting the bridge. We inspected the top surface, we inspected, we got inside the bridge, looking at the underside of the deck and the top side of the arch, and we also got under the bridge utilizing Snoopers trucks to look at the underside of the arches and the piers. We spent August and September taking samples from the bridge and testing those samples, concrete samples. Some of the tests that we ran were chloride ion tests. We did petrograph analysis of the concrete, and we also got an idea of what the compressive strength of the concrete was. We took all this information then and utilized it in our evaluation and submitted a report to the engineering department in November of 2013. So the existing conditions that we found, I'm just gonna show you some quick slides here about some typical conditions that we found. This is kind of the top side of the deck. It isn't necessarily anything unusual. We see this all over the place, this type of condition. It's got an asphalt overlay, it's got a lot of cracking, a lot of patching that's occurred in the past. Generally, what we've found historically is a lot of this information transmits down to the underside of the deck, so we see this type of cracking then in the structural portion of the deck. You can see here that there's a missing part of the expansion joint there, I mean totally missing, and we even have a little bit of concrete sidewalk repairs showing up. When we got inside the bridge, this is a typical condition that we found. Looking up at the underside of the deck, we see the corrosion there is corroded rebar. And what happens is the rebar corrodes, it expands, starts flaking off, and it spalls the concrete, and that's what you're seeing here. In this particular photo, you can even see a kind of a hairline crack with a couple more freeze cycle cycles. That piece is probably gonna pop off also. The underside of the deck is, you know, shows, looks like it's had some previous patching. The one thing we want to note on the underside of the deck, in 1967, when this was rehabilitated, it was also widened. So the outside two feet of the arches are actually newer than the rest of the arches in this bridge. But some of the things that we take away from this picture are, you can see some spalling getting ready to happen, you can see some leaching occurring, and some other spalling happen. But again, nothing that seemed unusual. So we then decided to start taking some samples, start chipping away and seeing what kind of damage this actually indicated. And what we ended up finding is that the concrete was actually peeling away from itself. And this is just an example. You can almost see this is just large areas of concrete that we could just pull down. And this was the condition that was not anticipated in the evaluation process. An arch is a great structure. It's got geometric, it's a geometric shape that on its own is always in compression, and concrete is great in compression, so arches generally last a long time unless something like this happens, unless we start losing cross-section of the bridge. In the end, we found that this condition existed in almost 50% of the bridge. So it's a big chunk of all the arches out there. So, at a bare minimum, we came up with a rehabilitation plan. Okay, what are we gonna do to rehabilitate this bridge? At a bare minimum, we needed to replace the deck and the sidewalks. That exposed some of the archwork, at least on the top side, that we could get to easier as opposed to trying to crawl through manholes. We came up with a system to repair that peeling away of the arches on the underside. With the new deck, you're gonna get new joints, and this particular bridge is highly susceptible to scour from the river. So part of the rehabilitation plan is to implement some scour protection for the piers that we have right now. So what's the cost associated with all of this? We have to, there is an initial cost that we came up with to rehabilitate this bridge based on those items that we pointed out, $6.4 million. The issue with a rehabilitation is there's going to be costs down the road. There's still additional costs down the road. 25 years later, we can expect to see, to have to deal with another major rehabilitation. There's gonna have to be a deck overlay, there's gonna have to be more arch repair, more pier repair, all of those things. So we took those costs, brought all the money back to today's dollar, so we get a total present cost of the repairs in the future plus the initial cost of $9.3 million. In the report, we also tried to identify then a replacement option. You know, let's, okay, is it worth spending that kind of money to rehabilitate this bridge? What does it cost to replace a bridge? So we came in with a, I'm gonna call it a no frills, we call it up here a no aesthetics type bridge. A typical bridge that we see all across the state, precast concrete beams spanning pier to pier across the river, same roadway width, same sidewalk width, and had an initial cost of $6 million. Now, bridges designed today have a life expectancy much longer than bridges designed, especially back then, but even 50 years ago. We would expect this bridge to last at least 100 years using today's technology and today's materials. That doesn't mean there aren't costs in the future. 35 years out, there'd be some minor repairs. 70 years out, there'd be more major repairs. We went out as long as the rehab bridge was in use and brought those costs forward and had a total present cost of $6.4 million. So after we submitted the report, we got together with the city and said, okay, what other options do we have? What other options do we have for a replacement bridge? We looked at all of those options and narrowed them down to four where we did further evaluation. These are the four that we looked at. We're gonna call them the Beam Bridge No Aesthetics, that's the one that was identified in the report. We have a Beam Bridge, a precast Beam Bridge with some basic aesthetic features. We have a Beam Bridge with some higher level aesthetics, and then we looked at a true arch bridge. Here's some renderings that we put together to help illustrate some of the features that we're looking at. This is the no aesthetic bridge. This has no frills. It's, for all of us that have driven under bridges, this is very common. There's a whole series of precast beams up there. We've got the same roadway width, the same sidewalk width. We've got some standard lighting on top of it and just some basic wall piers to handle the river flows. When we added some basic aesthetics to the bridge, what we added were things that we've done in the past and things that the city of Des Moines has done in the past. We put some form liners on the piers to help illustrate some limestone stacking of limestone. We incorporated some color concrete to bring some of that up. We modified the imposts on the four corners of the bridge to kind of replicate the original, the original 1917 Bridge imposts. Again, we've incorporated some form liners on that. Basic aesthetic. We didn't do a lot, basic aesthetics. When we went to the higher level aesthetics, what we tried to do is, we still have a Beam Bridge, but what we tried to do was incorporate some of the features that are in the bridge right now or in some of the bridges right now. This bridge, although it's not on the historic register, it is in a historic district. So the Court Avenue Bridge is a historic bridge, but there are historic elements within this district, City Hall and other buildings around. So as we zoom in, we begin to see some of the features. We utilize, what we're utilizing is a cast-in-place panel on the sides of each bridge to help form in all of these features that we're seeing on the side. We're also utilizing color concrete to try to hide or create shadows to push those beams back to try to hide them away from us. What we're gonna look at are three specific elements. We're gonna look at what's happening here at the piers. We're gonna be looking at what's happening here at the imposts and kind of what's happening here, what I'll call the keystone of the arch. At the piers, we've just kind of zoomed in. What we've tried to replicate is the actual details that showed up in the original 1917 Grand Avenue Bridge. As we all remember, it was rehabilitated in 1967 to give us kind of these salmon-colored panels on top of it. This is what the original bridge looked like. So we've tried to kind of bring some of that back into the pier or back into the bridge and even incorporated in the pier some of the ice break elements that showed up then. When we look at the imposts, we've got kind of a round structure. What we brought in here, this is Court Avenue. This is the impost that's over there right now. We're trying to bring some of that historic bridge element back over to this bridge. And you can still see, there is a line there. That's the line that's trying to, that shows the beam that's out there that we're trying to hide. When we look at kind of this keystone element, what we're seeing is kind of some circle, there's kind of a circle element. We pulled that circle element from the Court Avenue Bridge too. But if you travel around in the historic district down here, you'll find that circle element in a lot of the buildings too, even the one we're in right now, City Hall. There's a lot of that kind of element in City Hall. We also then looked at some of this vertical line stuff occurring here at the pier and at this keystone. This is the armory building just to the north. Again, got some vertical lines that we're trying to pull into the bridge from the historic district. We get up on top, and what we see up here is some panels incorporated into the rail. That's what we've tried to do here. So we pulled those panels from a couple different elements. Again, this is the Court Avenue Bridge. We're trying to pull elements in from around, and we also found them in the original 1917 Grand Avenue Bridge. Somewhat hard to see, but there's some panels there, and there's panels all the way across there. That's what we're trying to incorporate here, try to bring some of the history of this bridge back into the new bridge. We looked at some night lighting aspects. All this shows is that we're able to light over the bridge, down the side of the bridge to highlight some of the elements that are going on. There are a lot of options there that we could look at, but we are able to highlight a bunch of those. We look at it from an overhead standpoint. Again, it's the same width, we have the same number of lanes, the same number of parking lanes. So then we looked at the true arch, and what we found, it was almost by accident, was the city of Columbus, Ohio has a very similar situation that the city of Des Moines has. They have multiple bridges that cross the river into the downtown area, all of them arch bridges. They were challenged at the time with what to do to maintain their traffic system into the downtown and yet deal with the funds that they have. The decision that they came up with was to replace one of the bridges with the true arch bridge and to replace all the other ones with more conventional framing. This is a picture of the true arch bridge that they built. The arches here are actually precast, meaning they're cast off-site, shipped to the site, lifted up with a crane, put in place. And then the deck that you drive on is cast in place at that time. So they've recognized that this type of framing is not common anymore. You know, contractors don't want to get their formwork in the water, especially with rivers that are subject to flooding or high waters because that normally takes out their formwork. That's why the precast element occurred here. So in the end, we looked at then the cost. What are the costs of all these bridges in the comparison? We looked at only the present-day costs because all of them are new technology, new bridges, so we would expect all of them to last 100 years. So we didn't bring anything back to current time down the road.
Thanks, Tim. Chuck Britson did these construction estimates for us, and these are kind of the four out ones. We pointed the Beam Bridge No Aesthetics, just the construction alone was about a $6 million bridge. The Beam Bridge with basic aesthetics was $6.6 million. And that's, again, that's just construction. That doesn't have design and construction inspection, those other elements with it. In our current CIP program, the Beam Bridge with basic aesthetics is what we currently have programmed in there because we had some additional money for those lower-level or basic aesthetics. The option of Beam Bridge Higher Level Aesthetics, which we spent quite a bit of time looking at today, again, some of those elements as we move forward, you know, they could change some to try to make them even better if we can. But the basic concept that it's still a Beam Bridge with trying to put these cast-in-place panels on the outside to replicate the arches, we're looking at about $7.9 million, which if that is an option that's brought back, we're not really gonna make a recommendation today. We want to go through the public process, but if it is one recommendation, then there would need to be a budget adjustment this fall, an additional $1.3 million to what's currently in the CIP. The True Arch Bridge, these estimates, they're looking about $32 million, and that's based upon the precast, the type of construction that's done in Columbus, which actually is a cheaper and faster arch construction method than the way they did it 100 years ago where you build all of the formwork and cast it in the river. So we thought that was fairly good. It was an actual project, had to make some adjustments for the size and bring it up to current costs. Again, that doesn't include design, which on the True Arch Bridge would be quite a bit more than the Beam Bridge. You might be looking at another $10 million for design and construction inspection on the True Arch Bridge because there'd be a lot of off-site inspection required.
Jeb, we have that additional cost on the previous three that you've discussed.
As far as...
Are you talking about a $10 million additional cost?
No, the design would not be that much. They'd be quite a bit less. I mean, we're talking, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Versus the millions.
Millions, yeah. Just because it's, they're more standard technology and inspection processes and it's difficult, so. That brings us back to, you know, we talked about funding, and just want to give a highlight the concept that we are in the process of doing a Tiger application. That application is to be submitted at the end of this month. This particular bridge, Grand Avenue over Des Moines, is included in that package. And just highlight that it's, this bridge, I think, is a good bridge to include in that package. The Tiger Grants are supposed to be something that have a national significance, but this bridge, obviously, the connectivity of it between the two sides of downtown is very important. And I, you know, sometimes we don't think about how important connectivity is until we actually lose that, you know, when we have streets closed because there's a fire, you know, with all the impacts and things like that, the connectivity in the downtown is super important, and we need to maintain that. This bridge isn't something that we can just give up. Also, this project includes a concept of complete streets because not only is it a bridge for vehicles, but it's also on our bike lane system, and it's also pedestrian way. And in addition to that, it has incorporated part of the Riverwalk. So it really is kind of this multifaceted connection. And I think when you look at it, this isn't the, the bridge that we're looking at now isn't the only bridge that's been there. This is a, you know, it's already at least second or third generation bridge. It was even a ferry there before. So the concept that the connection here is necessary for the vitality of Des Moines, it's historically been there, and it's going to be there in the future, and we need to do what we can to preserve and keep that connection for the future. One of the things is the flood benefits of this bridge. When we build a new bridge, it allows us to raise the bridge up. Also, the current arches are further down in the river, so they have more constriction. There are other things associated. We talked about the scour protection. That's when the water, in high flood flow conditions, the floor or the bed of the river actually moves. And if it undercuts the bridge, it removes the support. You have to remember, this current bridge is actually on wood pile. You know, it's like, wow, it's been there 100 years. So there's pieces of wood that support that bridge. The new bridge, we would have significantly stronger piers so that that scour wouldn't be as much of a danger it is now. It's always a concern when we have high waters that if it's gonna affect Grand Avenue. And again, if it did, if a flood did take it out, that would be a severe impact to the city because it wouldn't easily go back in. It would be years before you could replace it if it went out and you didn't have a plan in place to replace it. As far as national economic significance, Des Moines, as you're aware, is an important financial insurance hub, and these connections are important for us to continue to maintain our status as a premier financial insurance hub. And so those combined together, we feel make this as a national importance, that it would be a project appropriate for the federal government to put money towards this project. So that's really kind of the information. If you had some more questions, we do have some displays up here that were part of the historical fabric, looking at some of the original ferry and the original like the Truss Bridge that had been there, and then when Bridges was reconstructed, and they've been reconstructed in '67. So there's kind of been this evolution of that bridge on Grand Avenue. We tried to hearken back to something even more historical than what's there now because I think in '67, a lot of those things had been removed, and we want to try to reincorporate in those. These are some of the things that we're gonna be displaying at that public input meeting in a week from now, and this will be on the website, this presentation, so people can have an opportunity to look at it, make as much comment. We want to bring that back to you in two weeks to kind of give you a sense for what the community thinks about these options. So any questions at this point?
Jeb, before we go on the table quickly, you talked about the supports in the scouring effect that happens during high water underneath the Grand Avenue. In the collection of bridges that we have down there, we've got Locust, we've got Walnut, we've got Court. Do they also have that wood support underneath there?
They do. Grand is more susceptible to the scour since it's the first bridge up by the dam, so the water velocities are higher there. So it's sort of a combination, not only the supports, but also how quickly the water is. Eventually, you know, those bridges will need to be replaced too because how long can those piers last? At this point, we don't see any indication that there's a structural failure of those supports, but since they're not as deep, you know, the scouring, you know, it's, we don't know. We have to go back and, we have, we train our police divers. They actually go to classes about bridge inspection. So after the flood conditions, we go back and do those inspections and periodically to try to check those things out.
All right, let's start over here. Anybody? Bill? Skip?
Jeb, as we move on down to Locust, Walnut, and Court, is there the opportunity there to use the same design on all four bridges so we lessen the cost?
Well, that's kind of the idea is that I would suspect, since we already have bridges, that they look very similar, that we would want to try to, whatever's done on Grand, that's going to kind of set us up for replicating it versus the ones at Columbus. Those bridges were further apart. They chose to have ones that would look different when they replaced them, even though the original ones were similar. My sense of it, and of course, it would come to the council at that time when we replaced them, is that there would be a desire to kind of replicate it. So that makes Grand, this decision, in a way, more important because it kind of sets the tone. Now, Court Avenue, in my opinion, we should always try to preserve. That's the last one with as much historical, and so you really kind of have to commit to keep that, which means the restoration techniques will be much more expensive. But if you can kind of make sure that's the one you're gonna keep, you want to spend the money to keep, you know, because it's got stone elements. There's gonna have to be design exceptions to keep that one in service, but it's really the last one we have left. So I wouldn't recommend this on Court. We'd want to keep it as long as possible. Eventually, you know, we don't know if those supports and piers would have to keep inspecting it. Everything has an end of life, but I would assume that council would be receptive to try to, really, it'd be very expensive, but to try to spend what's necessary in Court. And you kind of take your money and spend it where you can do the most good, and that would be kind of our recommendation as moving into the future.
Certainly, the history is important, and I think Skip points out a good benefit to try to keep the aesthetics at a fairly high and similar level, but do the same thing on all of them. I would personally have a little bit of, we'd have to have a long discussion to spend $32 million on one of those bridges. Bob, anything?
No.
Joe?
It's great to have this up. They, you know, all has been wondering about what's gonna happen there, and I think that you got good ideas. Thank you.
Have we looked at the other bridges? How far out are we to doing the other bridges? We're actually, right now, we'll have a report to look, to do a more in-depth analysis on Locust and...
Locust, Walnut, and Court.
All three of those. Because essentially, we have an inspection process on these arch bridges, and then when we got into the rehabilitation phase, it's like, ew, it's a lot further along as far as deterioration. So that's really hard on the programming and our budget, you know, and people like Scott, you know, doesn't appreciate that. So what we do, what we're doing right now is after we found that out on these other ones, we're gonna do a more in-depth analysis. We can't do that all the time because a lot of this analysis, you're actually doing some destructive testing, you know. And you don't want to drill holes in it every year because then you're gonna ruin your bridge in a period of a couple decades doing that. So you have to be careful, but I think it's appropriate at this time that we're, I kind of think of it as exploratory surgery, you know. You just don't go in the first time the doc, he says, well, I don't know what's wrong with you, but we'll cut you open. It's like, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, you know, let's kind of do... Let's, let's kind of do this in a process and, but we've gotten to that point where we really need to get a bearing on what, on whether we're going to go forward with the rehabilitation or replacement on those other bridges. It may be possible that on these other bridges, that we could still do a rehabilitation if we can get enough, a life out of it. And as you notice, we try to do this, it's basically in economics, bring it back, which is the most cost effective over the life cycle. You have to look at first costs and also the future maintenance, so.
How long will the construction take for Grand Avenue?
Haven't determined that yet, but it will be down for a significant part of the year because you're out in the river. It has to be done and rebuilt in the place that it's at. So it's going to be significant. And that will be part of the, as we move forward, the traffic control and some things that we need to do to mitigate those things. And that may require even some modifications on some side streets to make that work.
Christine?
Tiger Grant, can you talk about the Tiger Grant, what the dollar amount is and is that something that's going to be available for future bridges or is it just looking at this bridge?
Well, the Tiger Grant includes more than just Grand. There's a series of bridges downtown, Jackson Bridge and Scott and Locust and Grand, and we're packaging that all together. We're putting that grant together right now. If we were able to keep all the bridges in there, it would be about a $40 million combination with about $20 million of Tiger Grant. What we're doing right now is called the benefit cost ratio. We may need to adjust one or two bridges in there to try to make us as competitive as possible because you want to get as high a score. But we will have that here at the end of the month. So that's kind of the general outcome.
Okay. I just wanted to comment, I love the architectural, historically significant characteristics that you've incorporated and trying to capture the arch concept and doing it in a way that still is reasonably priced.
The higher level aesthetics?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. A couple of quick points. I love our city flag. And if any of you have not had the chance to read a little essay that our friend Gerald LeBlanc wrote, you know, he had a contest, he was a school teacher to design and he said, you know, every city focuses on their river, but our flag focuses on the bridges because bridges unite people. And, and I think, I think getting to this and doing it in a significant way is important. Not $32 million, but something, but something that's really cool. Two other quick points. Number one, we've talked a little bit about the Tiger Grant. I want to, I want to point out that the MPO has a large significance and most of us serve on the MPO. Bob and I are on the executive committee. They, we need their endorsement of this. And at our last meeting, we added this project to the priority list of the MPO. A lot of times, people say, why, why does the city go out to Washington DC and talk to our delegation and the Department of Transportation and others? This is one reason. So in June, we have the chance to go to DC with 100 or more community leaders and I'd strongly encourage the council to go there because funding for this will be a primary focus of that trip this year. And it is a real benefit to get our whole community in there. As you know, about five years, six years ago, the federal government really stopped doing earmarks. And I told the MPO this, you know, they did it primarily because the federal government built the bridge to nowhere, you know, and it became kind of a flashpoint. Well, this is kind of in Des Moines, the bridge to everywhere. And, and I just think it's really critical that we put our full might behind this bridge and the rest of the Tiger Grant, the bridges that Jeb outlined. It is a real game changer for us. I care deeply about the aesthetics of it, but this is primarily about safety. We've seen bridges collapse and it's about flood control. And I think those are the messages that we have to take to DC.
Jeb, thank you. Mr. Manager, Jeb, before you leave, I think manager may even want to have you address something else. I don't know.
I just want to make a couple of quick comments, Mr. Mayor, council members. Just to be clear, in the Tiger Grant application, there are four vehicular bridges and three pedestrian bridges. Total of seven bridges in the application. It's a huge undertaking and you'll notice in recent agendas, Jeb's brought forward various contracts. This is a top priority for the city and for the engineering department, so it's consuming a lot of time and resources. Your favorable votes have helped move this along as quickly as we can. As the mayor has been able to do in his leadership position, particularly here and in Washington, we know that to be competitive, we have to be at the sort of the front line. So we are doing everything we can to expedite these applications to make sure we're in the most competitive position we can. Second point I wanted to make is more of a general comment, and that is that we seem to be in an era of bridge reconstruction in the city. There's been a lot of bridges that have come forward. Jeb and his staff have always maintained an active bridge inspection program, so we have a lot of bridges here. But it is one of the things that distinguishes this city from others in Iowa, certainly others in the metro area. We have a lot of bridge work here and it's going to continue to consume a significant portion of your capital budget. You simply can't have bridges falling down, so you don't have a lot of choice. Doing these kind of grant applications, Tiger Grant applications, is going to be critical. These are very expensive projects to take on. Getting some help from federal government or the state or the MPO, as a matter of fact, all of those things are really going to be helpful and important for the city as you go forward because there's so much bridge work to do here. And you're always going to want to be in a position to make sure that the bridges are well-maintained. The last thing you want to have happen is bridges being closed or shut down because they're not able to sustain traffic. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making all those comments.
All right. Let's move right along and get an update on the downtown Yonkers fire. Who's going to move forward with that?
Gotcha.
All right.
Okay.
See, the chief's sitting down, so I wondered if we could queue him up here.
He'll be up here, don't worry. Mayor, members of the council, Matt Anderson, Assistant City Manager, Chief Tekip, myself and Phil Delfield are going to tag team a quick presentation for you. The timing worked out really well this morning for us to come before you. We've been communicating periodically throughout the week, giving you quick updates on what's going on, but we wanted this opportunity to get face to face, answer any questions you have and give you kind of a, and we're actually going to tackle this kind of chronologically with the three of us of chief updating you on his efforts and his team's wonderful efforts throughout the event. Phil's going to touch on the efforts that he will be doing now with his staff and have been doing in the, over the last few days with surrounding property owners, working with the Alexander Company on, on the recovery efforts and getting streets back open and such. And then I'm going to talk about kind of our work that we've done with the surrounding property owners and the tenants and the building landlords and then potential redevelopment going forward. That's a very common question that we're getting a lot and we, we don't have all the answers yet, but I want to update you on the process of that. So as we transition now from onsite, from the ATF's onsite investigation to more of that recovery effort, there's going to be a lot more in the city's hands than there was in the last week. So I'll let Chief Tekip start off.
And as he comes up, those of you that are watching this, this is not a current aerial of that block.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, John Tekip, Chief of the Fire Department. I'm just, I'm not going to go over an operational overview of the fire. You know, that took several days and I don't want to take several hours to do that here. But I do want to hit some, some main elements, some impressions, the cooperation with the ATF, a little about codes and a little bit about looking forward. The general impression and the effort for me really is, I've never had a fire of this magnitude in my career. I'm not seeking to ever have a second opportunity to tackle such, such a large endeavor. But the level of cooperation and collaboration across, from yourselves to all the different city departments, to the suburban fire departments, the partnership, EMC, the Alexander Group, you name it, has really, it's been remarkable. I can't say that enough. We'll spend a long time telling people thanks. One of those partnerships was working with the ATF. They had their out briefing yesterday. The decision to bring in the ATF was not about a concern as to why there was a fire there, but it really had to do with the number of resources that not just the ATF, but specifically their, their national response team can bring in. And in concluding their work yesterday, what we're reporting is that it's an, it's an open and ongoing investigation. The cause of the fire is undetermined. The alternatives to that would be that the fire would be determined to be accidental. But in that case, you have to say what the accident is and be able to show that. Another alternative would be that the fire was incendiary, but then you'd have to show how the fire started. And if you can't do that with certainty, then the fire is undetermined. There isn't any information at this time to show that, that the fire is, well, was set intentionally or that it's tied to any individual. Those are usually the first questions that come up and that can be reported. My lack of description further is not about being coy, but really, it's about being respectful to the ongoing work of the investigation. If I were to say things like, you know, probably and, well, I kind of think and things like that, that really just kind of leads to rumors and feeds a lot of misinformation. And so we want to make sure that we have timely and accurate information that we can report and people can rely on. And that very brief summary of undetermined is about it. One thing about the, not so much about the Yonkers building itself, but the surrounding downtown, and I don't know if you've thought of this up to this point, but you should also commend yourselves, the decisions that the mayor and council make about adopting the most, the most current, the most progressive codes showed their value in that the protections that were already in place and how those surrounding buildings and connections were put together did their work in stopping or limiting the extent of fire damage. You can't do that with, with people and hoses at the time. There's inherent things in how we, how we build and protect our facilities that are, that can't be beat. Your decisions to adopt really quality codes makes a big difference. Going forward, I go back to having the ATF here and the national response team. By having that effort and seeing what amazing work people can do when they go to, they work together, we save weeks to months in order to begin the, all of the private and public recovery efforts. Without that, that large collaborative effort, we would be, we would be well into the summer before we'd probably be in a position to say, okay, now it's time to clean up your site and get back to business. I'm sure all of our partners downtown appreciate that. That's my update, if you have any questions.
Anybody?
Great.
Do we have any estimate on the rest of the roads and when demolition might occur or they'd be free to? I know that's a question I get a lot that the public might be interested in.
Well, I think that, I think Phil may address a little bit of the timeline on that.
Okay.
Obviously, there's a, there's a structural concern in, you know, the closer you get to Seventh and Walnut and a glass concern and community development and the building department will be addressing that.
You and your team are now controlling the site?
The-
Public safety or, I mean, who's controlling the site?
Well, PD has, still has control of the security of the, of the perimeter, but Phil can, can address who has which specific pieces for the, for the transition parts of it. It's, as far as the fire department goes, we're no, we are no longer controlling the site because our onsite work is completed.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Phil Delfield, Community Development Department. And as the chief has alluded to, this is no longer a fire site. This is a recovery effort. So this, the custody of the site now reverts to the property owners. We have been in contact with each of those and that transition will be happening early this week. We anticipate today and tomorrow going forward. At this point, police department still control the perimeter of the site. We're working with the Alexander Company and the surrounding businesses so that they take custody of their property and they will be responsible for the site's security and establishing a construction perimeter as this thing goes forward. We've been in contact through the weekend and we have contingencies in place so that each of them will take their steps necessary to move their projects ahead. We will, of course, be available to help facilitate that and lend our guidance and where appropriate, our reviews for the project. So as we see it, the next steps will be establishing the, the private perimeter of the construction site, establishing fencing to keep the curious out and away, allowing limited access for construction professionals, engineers, tradespeople to begin the work so that they can evaluate, they being the business owners, they can evaluate the needs that they have to move forward. So we expect that the Alexander Company will begin very soon to analyze what's left of the building and develop a, either a stabilization plan or a demolition plan. Likewise, the Partnership Building and the Financial Center owned by the same companies, they're beginning their work to evaluate what's necessary. They will be doing some monitoring, air quality monitoring and so forth. They are working to, to begin, there's some cars in the Partnership Building, for example. So how do we remove the cars and do so in a safe fashion? So that's going on right now as well. The city as well has interests as property owners. So we are property owners. We have the Skywalks and so forth that are our concern. And likewise, our staff will have to begin, our staff, I'm speaking of engineering and CD, we will have to begin that evaluative process. There will probably be some stabilization necessary of the Skywalks. But before we can get in there and do some of that work, the, some of the debris, the scaffolding has to be picked off strategically. So we'll be speaking with the Alexander Company on their debris removal plan. Those things haven't been worked out in fine detail yet, but we expect that to be moving forward this week and into the future. So we can continue to give you updates as that progresses, but it will take some time to do some analytical work. EMC has already begun much of the work that they need to do. So they've been inside their buildings, they've done the air quality monitoring, they've moved some of their staff away from the damaged windows. When I say EMC, I'm speaking of both 700 Walnut and the Kaleidoscope Tower. They have actually begun some of the work of removing some of the glass. That will also be ongoing. The glass remains a concern. It's loose, it's unsupported, so it can fall. So we're talking to the business owners and the building owners about how to protect the exit ways leaving, leading from the building into, until that glass is all stabilized. EMC is working on a plan now on how they will work to get that glass stabilized. So a lot of answers, a lot of questions remain unanswered at this point. There will take some time to do some, some analytical work. Remember that they haven't been able to get into most of these buildings until this weekend at the earliest. EMC a little bit earlier because they had no internal damage that was significant enough that would keep them from entering their buildings. So this is now, as we say, in recovery. We are working forward on how to restore the site. We will have some concerns with traffic flow. You asked earlier about when the streets will open. Locust, of course, is open. Eighth Street will be the next street to open, but the Partnership Building is going to need some staging areas, so that's the best opportunity for them to stage as they do their air quality monitoring and asbestos remediation. They will be on, on Eighth Street's side for some time, hopefully not an extended period of time. It's our goal to get the streets open as quickly as possible and to facilitate that recovery. As soon as we can move it even partially open is, is our goal. So we're working with them, but we don't have a, an idea yet how long that will take. Seventh Street, much longer because of the physical material in the streets and then also the need to take down parts of the Yonkers building. So available for questions.
Any quick questions? Christine?
Phil, I, to, a question and a comment. I was just really amazed at how there was not any smoke smell in the Skywalk system after the fire. I fully expected to walk in Monday and smell smoke of some type. And that was a comment that I heard more and more from people as you were out and about in the community. So I'm not exactly sure how that happened or what transpired to eliminate that, but it was really amazing.
Part of it were the physics of the fire. The Skywalks were actually providing air into the fire for a while, but more importantly, the environmental doors and the fire doors that our codes require, the chief alluded to strong construction codes that you folks have adopted, they worked. They kept the fire from spreading to adjacent properties. Without those doors, this system could have been a huge liability for us.
The other comment, the cars that you referred to in the parking garage, are those cars that are permanently, that they're overnight cars? Who do they belong to? Because I thought that was a parking garage that should be empty at the end of the day.
I couldn't say who they belong to. They, they're private parties that own them and perhaps, is anybody from the Partnership here? I don't believe-
There was one that was in the, the news. Apparently it's a, somebody with a guard that was in here and was at a party at the Marriott.
Oh.
It's an unfortunate circumstance, but again, be aware that all the products of combustion, the asbestos, all those concerns being confined there in- combustion, the asbestos, all those concerns being confined there in the Partnership Building, those cars are also in need of remediation. So they have to be cleaned off in a fashion that captures the runoff water and to make sure that the many asbestos product is contained in according with state law.
All right. Phil, thank you.
I'm going to give you a quick update on the impact to the surrounding businesses, and then going forward, our plans with the Alexander Company. So I'll just kind of walk around the site, kind of going from the least impacted to the most impacted. So to get your bearings, this is, this big rectangle is the Yonkers Building. The square on the east is where most of the damage occurred in the wood frame building. The Financial Center really incurred no damage. They didn't lose any windows, they didn't have any smoke or water damage in the building. They were back up and running right away. All their tenants were in on Monday. So no real impact on that building. You will see, as recovery efforts begin, they're going to, as the site opens up, right now, the Financial Center is using kind of a backdoor Mulberry entrance to get the tenants in the building. As the perimeter shrinks, and Jennifer Bohack is working on her, kind of the permanent fencing plan, we're going to try and bring that perimeter close to 7th to open up some of those entrances. There's a couple Walgreens entrances and a main entrance and a bank entrance. Open up as many of those we can, and they will construct a pedestrian walkway, kind of similar to what you see on construction sites, so that they're protected from debris there. Working up to the north, the Hub Tower, as Phil referenced, there's a lot of window damage on the 7th Street facade of the Hub Tower. But those businesses were, the office tenants were back in on Tuesday. That's how fast EMC was able to get things back up and running. We're really fortunate to have a landlord with the resources that EMC does and the technical experience on their staff. So what they're doing is they've moved any offices that are on this west facade, they've moved those offices interior, nobody's working in those offices, but they're back, those companies in there are back up and running, with the exception of some of the street-level and skywalk-level tenants that received a lot of water damage. Those, unfortunately, for those, these two buildings, the Hub and EMC, these two skywalk bridges sloped down away from the Yonkers Building toward them, and they really acted as gutters as chief was pumping 6 million gallons of water onto the site. It had to go somewhere, and unfortunately, some of that went into those two buildings. So they did have water damage, damage to their escalators and into their, water in their elevator pits and some drywall damage. So the Brugers is still closed on the skywalk level, the dry cleaning pickup is still closed. There's a dentist and a couple smaller offices on the street level that are still closed that EMC is working to get them back in. The EMC Tower itself, 800 windows on the north facade, and many of them are damaged and all of them need to be inspected. So they're working on that, they've been working on it really since day one. A number of them on the lower levels were blown completely out by the heat. And then some, it's a multi-pane system, so you have a, you have a win and outer window pane, sheet of film, a sheet of film, and then an inside pane. So there's varying degrees of damage to those window panes. And when you look out, when you, I was particularly, I couldn't figure it out myself Saturday when I went down Saturday morning during, after the fire, you saw what looked like plastic hanging out those, and you couldn't quite figure out what it was. It was that, some of those, that interior film had, after the outer pane had broken and fallen away, the interior film melted and was hanging out the windows. So that's what you see there. So they're working on those. You can't just go down to Menards and buy these type of windows. So what you'll see is, they're going to just board some of them up where they can, and they're putting some structural integrity to some of those that just have one pane, and then they'll go through and replace them as they get them ordered and fabricated. Moving up to the Partnership Building, significant impact to the Partnership Building. As Phil mentioned, the potential for asbestos cleanup that's necessary in the parking ramp itself because it was exposed and open during the fire, and then significant water damage in the office space. Most of you've been to the Greater White Partnership's office space, so you know they're on two levels there. They had, as I think Jay Byer said, it was basically raining in their office. So all their computers were destroyed, their telephones, they lost a lot of paper records. Fortunately, they had backup for their IT system off-site, so that's okay. So they're going to be, they've relocated to Rue on 2, and they're going to be there for a significant amount of time as the building gets rebuilt. And there were some other tenants, other office tenants in the Partnership Building that, so we have common ownership between the Partnership Building and the Financial Center. So what they did is this landlord moved some of their smaller office tenants over into the space that they had, already had vacant in the Financial Center. But clearly, you know, the most impacted would be those food court businesses. There was eight feet of water in that lower-level food court on Saturday. So significant impact that really just wiped out those operations. And then going to the Yonkers Building itself, we are really lucky to have a developer like the Alexander Company to work with. They've been top-notch, they have the resources to deal with a disaster like this. So they've been very responsive, their entire management team has been here. David Boss was here most of the week last week, and has been very open and communicative with everybody, just a great team. Now that they finally have that site released to them, they'll be bringing their engineers and contractors in this week. They're working with Cody Christensen in Phil's shop to get a crane on-site so that they can actually lower people down into the site and take a closer look at exactly what they've got left to deal with. We've all seen some photos come out of the T-room that looks charred but intact, and so we don't want to get, we don't want to get people's hopes up too much, but that is one of the options that we're exploring, will be exploring for the next, probably next few months with Alexander Company, is what can be salvaged that's currently on site? Is there a way to reclaim that west building and rebuild it and restore the T-room? And that's going to be one of those things we'll be looking at. But I don't want to get people's optimism too high on this. We're just getting started, but that's going to be, we're going to explore everything. Really, that was one of the first questions that was asked to me, well, what are you going to do with the site? And we just don't know. I wish I could stand here and tell you, even if it may be structurally possible to salvage the west building, it may not be economically possible to salvage the west building. You know how long it took us to finally get redevelopment started and the number of layers of financing that's in place here. We've already had meetings with city staff and state staff with the developer to see what layers of financing we can keep in. There's state historic credits, enterprise zone credits, federal historic credits, a large $3 million CDBG-DR allocation. So we're looking to try to keep as many of those financial pieces available to us as we work with Alexander Group on reconstruction and redevelopment, but way too early to say what any of that's going to, what this will look like as we move forward. But we will continue giving you periodic updates. The updates will probably, they'll probably get a little, probably maybe an every-other-day update, I would say, as we move forward and get access to the site, but we will continue to keep you updated. I will, myself and Laura Graham will be your two main points of contact. If you have any questions, contact me and we'll get answers for you. And, you know, I can't say enough good things about the team that's been put together, the way everybody works seamlessly. This is one of those disasters that really touched almost every city department, had some role in this last week, and everybody pulled together and did a really good job. I was really proud of the way everybody worked. We had a meeting in EMC, kind of overlapping meetings, and I looked around the skywalk and we had, we had five department directors there at EMC's headquarters, and then probably about another six or seven staff members, all working on different facets of this problem and really doing a great job of working together. Any questions?
Matt, one question. The buildings directly to the west of EMC, I don't, in talking with EMC, I don't believe they had anybody in there.
I don't think so, do you?
Did they have any damage on those buildings?
Minor, minor. No, this is minor damage, and no, they were, I don't think, I think you're right. I think they were not occupied at the time. I think they had moved, most of their employees are in the tower.
Okay. Briefed out by all.
Thank you very much. Let's quickly move forward. We've got an amendment to our WRA 28E.
Matt. Jeb wanted me to remind you of one thing. We had been moving forward on the Walnut streetscape, as you recall, and we're hitting a point where we need, Jeb needs to go out to bid. We're going to hold off on that and re-circle the wagons with the ownership group, the property ownership group, particularly EMC. We can't submit a bid package that has, you know, this was one of those block faces between 7th and 8th that was in that bid package. We can't submit that out for bid when we don't know what's going to happen to that street. We don't know what the timing is of the skywalk rebuilds and repairs and traffic signals that have been impacted. Very, kind of the really nuts and bolts construction items that Jeb needs to put in a bid. We don't know that yet. So you'll see a delay on that, and we'll communicate back to you on what our new timeline is for that, or if we reduce the scope and just move to the block or two to the west, or, excuse me, to the east and just do a--
Okay, you'll keep us updated on that?
We'll keep you updated, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have an amendment to the WRA 28E agreement. Mr. Manager, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I would like to say something, Mayor and Council, just before Dave Miller starts into it. This agreement is something that is hugely significant to the city of Des Moines. We have, as you know, been plagued since the beginning of time with our city with a combined sewer system. It has caused enormous issues for us over the years, and this program has really been at the heart of the strategy to help deal with that combined sewer system, address clean water requirements, reduce basement sewer backups, all of which are significant issues for the city. So it's extremely important agreement. You might recall about 10 years ago, this agreement originally was put into place. It has operated with a good deal of success over that period of time. And I would say, if you look at all the regional programs that we have going, this has certainly been one of the ones that's been most successful. Just a key point that I think a lot of people don't quite understand about it, the WRA is a regional governing entity. So there's a board that is comprised of representatives from member governments in the metro area, and essentially, that board makes the policy decisions for the WRA. But the city of Des Moines is the operating entity. Dave Miller, who's our sewer administrator, is also the WRA director, so Dave wears two hats. Today, he's wearing the WRA hat, and he's going to give you a little presentation about that. So it's an extremely important agreement that we are presenting to you. Our goal is to do the workshop presentation today, and then we'll come back to you probably the second meeting in May and ask for your formal approval. It has to be approved by all of the member entities, so Des Moines is one, obviously I think the most important one, but there are other governments that have to act on it as well. So we wanted to do the briefing for you today to kind of give you a heads-up as to what's coming and give you a sense of the significance of this particular agreement. So with that preamble, Dave, please.
Thank you, Rick. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Dave Miller, WRA Director and Sewer Enterprise Administrator for the city of Des Moines. Today, we're talking about the Second Amendment to the WRA agreement, which was established in 2004. That's when the First Amendment was made to that agreement. There are 21 representatives on the board representing 17 communities. With that, I'll turn this over to Bob Beanstra and have him go through the meeting, go through the presentation.
Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm going to zip through the presentation this morning. We have a PowerPoint. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through all the points in the PowerPoint. I'm going to sort of follow the order and just kind of highlight it. The reason for the Second Amendment is that the 2004 agreement set forth a capital improvement program that extended through 2020. Well, we're now 10 years later, and we need to look beyond that. So we're extending that from 2020 to 2035. And with that, there's some changes in how we finance and prioritize improvements. Also, we've had 10 years to look at the agreement. We haven't amended it, it's worked very well, but there are a few tweaks that we need to make in the agreement. So what we're really here to talk about is changes to extend the capital improvement program another 15 years and some of the ancillary things that go with it. The WRA, as the city manager mentioned, has a separate entity and it has an operating contract. There's no changes to the operating contract. There's really no changes to the fundamental structure of the WRA. How the WRA works is we have operating costs, which should be paying for the normal kinds of things. Those are allocated to communities on the basis of their flow. So if you're 5% of the flow, you pay 5% of the cost. We also allocate capital improvements. We allocate those on the basis of flow as well, but the WRA currently has kind of two kinds of capital improvements, and we're going to be changing that, and why, that's why I want to touch just briefly on it. We have sort of the core, or the, what we call the backbone of the capital improvements, which would be the treatment plant and some of the major interceptor sewers that serve multiple communities. All of the member communities, all, there are 16 out of the 17 that have flow, pay for those improvements, the debt service or the cost, on the basis of their flow. The 2004 agreement also included some extensions of sewers that were to go out and connect communities such as Ankeny and Norwalk that really only benefited a select number of communities. And so the kind of the core communities, Des Moines, Pleasant Hill, Johnston, Polk County, don't pay for those improvements, but all of the, in aggregate, all of that outline communities, West Des Moines, Clive, Urbandale-Santerre Sewer District, that group that benefited from one or some of these improvements pay for that in aggregate. So it's sort of a two-layer cost sharing. We have a, the fundamental core is shared by everybody, and then sort of this expansion ring of sewers are paid for by all of those communities, but not the core improvements. We also had to address, what do we do with occurred, things that occurred prior to 2004? Well, as a part of the 2004 agreement, the basic 14 communities came up with a structure to have communities that had not paid over the years pay in. And so we have six communities, three that were a part of the original agreement and three that have been added since then, that make annual additional payments to pay back the core investors in the system for that investment that they made prior to 2004. Right now, we have three communities that are paying every year for 20 years and three that pay for 40 years. And so we're going to be making a tweak for that. So although the system has worked fairly well, we do have some issues that we need to address. There are new requirements that we need to address at the treatment plant, new regulations that have come into effect, some that will come into effect. And although we've solved most of the sewer problems, we still have some areas where the sewer system is overloaded, particularly on the west side of the Des Moines River, the Prospect Park northerly area, we do have some issues there, and we have some issues in Des Moines and some of the low-lying areas that are along the river. And so there are some things that need to be addressed. So in 2012, the WRA started on a plan to look at how do we update that capital improvement program and address some of those issues that we need to look at going forward. And came up with a program to try to, say, here we've got this new capital improvement program. But we also then needed to mirror that and put that into the 28E agreement. So although we've been very successful, we needed to find a mechanism to go forward and sort of blend that into the 28E agreement. So last summer, the WRA Management Agency Board appointed a governance committee that's made up of seven representatives. That committee's been working for the last several months to come up with this proposed amendment to the 28E agreement. From a structural perspective, there were not a lot of changes, but just enough changes, we decided we're going to basically re-adopt the agreement. So when you see the amendment, it looks like a brand-new agreement. 90% of it's unchanged, but rather than going in and kind of cherry-picking changes, we thought it would be best to just restate it, and so that's what we're doing. The first thing we're doing is we're extending the capital improvement program, as I mentioned. We have a little over $100 million of improvements that were identified in 2004 that haven't been built yet. And that's not because we're behind, it's because they weren't scheduled to be built until 2020. So those are going to go forward just as they are. We've identified about $267 million of new improvements. Most of those are at the treatment plant and a few core sewers. And I think as it relates to Des Moines, there's three things I'd like to highlight in this new capital improvement program. First, we're going to increase the capacity or the water conveying capacity of the treatment plant from 200 million gallons a day to 300 million gallons a day. One of the things we've noted, particularly after the floods of 2008 and 2010, the treatment plant can't get the water through quick enough, and so it causes some of the backups in the sewer system. We're going to solve that problem, and that will significantly reduce the impact of the treatment plant on overloading the sewer systems. Also, we have a problem with some facilities on the west side over Prospect Park area that don't have enough capacity for the flow, so there's a proposal to build a new sewer that instead of going south of the downtown and then east along the river, will actually kind of go diagonally southeast, and that will be able to relieve that capacity overload and take that to the treatment plant. The details of which we don't know, but that may also give an opportunity to look at some other areas and issues in Des Moines that are along that same corridor. Lastly, one of the projects the city needs to do over the next 10 years is to address the combined sewers in the Ingersoll area. And so right now, what, one of the limiting factors is-- And so right now, what, one of the limiting factors is there's not a lot of sewer capacity coming out of that Ingersoll area, kind of going down through downtown, down Walnut Street. And so one of the projects that's included is a new sewer that would go from essentially the river at the MLK Bridge, sort of down, around the downtown, and solve some of the Ingersoll run, give the city some flexibility.
Talking about storm or sanitary?
This would be sanitary. It's sanitary combined, but it does allow us to then take what's now in the combined, put it in the storm. So it does give us some opportunities really to look at both sides of it. So what we're doing is we're coming up with a program to extend the capital improvements, to do that $267 million worth of improvements, plus finish what we have. Right now, the WRA, because we're financed under Chapter 28F, we have to define what our debt limit is. And in 2004, they decided that we would go with a limit of $475 million of debt ever issued. Doesn't have anything to do with what we currently have outstanding, what we've paid off, but it's just a one-time cap. That worked very well for 10 years, but as we look forward to 2035, we're going to go beyond that. And so what we're proposing in this agreement is rather than having a one-time limit, to go to an issued limit, sort of what, analogous to what the GEO debt limit is, that you can't have outstanding at any time more than 5% of your valuation. So we're going to a similar concept with saying that the WRA can't have outstanding at any time more than $675 million of improvements. That's not saying we're going to have that, that's simply a limit. It works much like the debt limit in the city. The WRA Board still has to approve every bond issue or every loan, and it still has to go through all of the procedures. I mentioned earlier that we currently have sort of two ways that projects are financed. This round of improvements, we really don't have those extensions that go out to the outlying areas. Almost all of the improvements are right in the core part of the WRA. So we're going to a single system, which we call regional financing, where all of the costs would be shared by all of the communities. But we recognize that looking forward, there may be a few projects that benefit one or more communities. And what we're doing is we're leaving open an avenue so that we could still have communities, specific communities, pay for the projects that benefit them without sharing that cost to everybody. So instead of having a general program of having this cost sharing for projects that don't benefit everybody, we're going to a much more narrowly focused program and then sharing all the other costs across the board. The last thing we needed to look at is what's in the agreement itself. As I mentioned, we had just a few tweaks. One of the things we're creating is an executive committee. We haven't had one, and we found that there's some advantages to that. The second thing we're doing is we're changing the way the WRA Director is appointed. And the biggest change there is it now would, under the agreement, would provide that the city of Des Moines, as long as the operating contractor, has to concur consent in who's the WRA Director. And that allows for the WRA in Des Moines to sort of work together to get a WRA Director. That's how it's worked, but that's not how it's set forth in the agreement, and so we needed to final, formally put that into the agreement. The last thing is, the WRA is a limited-purpose organization. We're in the wastewater treatment and conveyance business, but our charter is written relatively narrowly. There's a couple of things we thought we needed to add to that. One is, the DNR now, through the SRF loan program, has these sponsored projects that are water quality-based improvements. The WRA has been involved in that program, and we thought it was appropriate to change that language to make sure we could do that. The other is, we wanted to have the ability to contract with other entities for limited services, not members. But if we're looking forward, if there's something in the future that might help us to contract with a non-member, we wanted to have the ability to do that. So that's kind of an overview. We're really working primarily on the capital improvement program. We're making some tweaks in the agreement, and as was mentioned, all 17 member communities are being asked to consider and approve this sometime between next Tuesday, when the WRA Board takes action on it, and the end of May. So sometime over the next seven or eight weeks, all 17 member organizations consisting of cities, counties, and sewer districts will be taking action on the agreement. And with that, we're available for questions.
All right, anybody have any quick questions? Christine?
Executive Committee and Des Moines' voting authority, is everybody's voting authority the same? Does Des Moines have a weighted vote? And how is the executive committee actually established, selected?
The basic structure of it is that every community has a member on the board, and you get one additional member if you want for every 25,000 or part thereof above 25,000.
Okay.
Des Moines has historically appointed three, although they could have eight. We normally vote by members, the board members. Dave mentioned there are 21 for 17 members. We also have a provision for a population-weighted vote.
Okay.
So if somebody wants a population-weighted vote, they can call for it. If you, for example, next week at the board meeting, we'll be having a population-weighted vote on the amendment. The executive committee is made up of five, and there's also a provision that Des Moines would always have a member.
Thank you.
So.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, it's that Des Moines will always have a member. It may be an officer, it may be somebody else.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Bob?
Is Tom Haddon still the Altoona representative?
He is not.
Okay, I see he's listed here, and gives West Des Moines two members, as I said.
Yeah, the committee was appointed last July. At that point, Tom represented Altoona. When he took his new employment, Altoona replaced him on the Management Agency Board, but that occurred just about the time the Governance Committee was winding up his work, so there's really been no formal change, but there's been no decision-making since he changed his position.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make one additional comment. In terms of the way the WRA works and the way this particular agreement was negotiated, I want you all to know that we had other very significant involvement from the city. Scott Sanders is Ex's Treasurer for the WRA Agency and was very much involved in reviewing the financial aspects of this, both for the WRA and for the city of Des Moines, so that's .
But not West Des Moines.
But not, of course not, West Des Moines. Jeff Lester and his staff are legal counsel for the WRA, so they were really the primary entity that drafted the agreement, with some input from the Allers Law Firm. Pat Gazitz, of course, is involved as the Public Works Director for the city. Jeb Brewer has involvement. Larry Hulse was all involved. So all these folks were part of a team process of put this rather significant, large agreement together. That gives me confidence that the detail of these words are going to be ones that work well for the city. I just want to make sure you are aware of that.
Thank you.
Bob, thank you very much. All right, we have a quick update now from our Human Resources Department regarding the city manager search process.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, James Wells, Human Resources. You've asked for an update on the city manager search process at each of your workshops throughout the, throughout the search, and so that's what I'm here to talk to you about this morning. Search really kicks off this week, as you know. Jim Mercer lands in Des Moines tonight, and he will start the stakeholder meetings tomorrow morning, first with staff, with department directors, and then with each of you individually, and then after lunch tomorrow with community stakeholders for the rest of the afternoon, Tuesday afternoon, and then Wednesday morning. So far, we have about 25 stakeholders, that's outside of staff and you, of course, 25 community leaders that are participating in those interview sessions. I believe council will observe, some of you will observe those sessions as well, and I think some more inter, invites, excuse me, some invites will be sent out even today as well. So there's space available for those sessions, they're one hour long. The interviews with council will happen in the mayor's conference room, and then the stakeholder meetings with the community leaders will all happen in the Stavrop, Stavropole Conference Room, just so you know. So the information that's gleaned from these sessions will help you in understanding what the community expects out of the next city manager, what qualifications they feel are appropriate, and that will, all that information will be used to help develop this position profile. Position profile will help create the marketing brochure for the position, and it will also give the recruiter a very good understanding of the city of Des Moines and the expectations of this job. And that's important, so when Jim is talking with candidates, he can provide that clear picture to them, and that will help them determine if they're a good fit for this position and whether or not they want to apply. Trying to be brief here. So over the weekend, Jim emailed me an updated schedule with more detail. Next week or after these meetings, Jim will put together that position profile and also then the brochure that he'll use. We expect to have that back by next week, possibly even Wednesday, and then the search will begin kind of as we originally planned on April 21st, if not before the position will be.
You expect when he puts that profile together that the council will then get to review that prior to issuing it?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Okay.
So we would expect to have that back for your review in his, in his timeline that he presented to me over the weekend by like next Wednesday, so a week from this Wednesday, you'd be able to review that. So with that, any questions? We're still on the schedule.
Any questions, anybody? Thomas?
Just to point out for the public and everybody here, on our agenda is designating, effective May 30th, Larry, as we talked about last week. So if you missed that, there's a little roll call in there. James and Jeff helped with that to kind of solidify what we talked about. One important element is that before May 30th, we want to set some specific goals, and so those aren't set in the roll call because we need input from everybody on that. But I kind of says the mayor and the committee, and we'll, we'll work on that, so. And the idea is, a big chunk of what Larry might earn that is in excess of his current salary will really be earned. You know, we want him to be focused in on outcomes on those goals, so unlike what he gets now, I guess. Sorry, Larry. You were the ones laughing, not me.
Anything else, anybody?
Thank you, James.
We'll open it up real quickly for public comment. Anybody in the audience like to make any comment this morning? Seeing none, those of you who are so inclined, we'll see you back this evening at 4:30 for our city council meeting. This meeting's adjourned.
Bill?
Hey.